Good evening and welcome to the February 9, 2015, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Would you all begin, rise and join the council in saying the Pledge of Allegiance led by Nick Klotz, one of the Boy Scouts from Florissant?
To allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and...
Thank you Nicholas. Before we begin, if you want to make a comment at the hearing from citizen portion of the meeting, I would ask that you fill out a yellow speaker card located on the table next to the entrance of the chambers. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shuldrough?
Here.
Hanky?
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. Item number four, special presentation of a certificate of appreciation from the VFW. Your Honor? So I have something here. On behalf of the Veterans of Four Awards of Florissant Valley Memorial Post 4105, I would like to present Mayor Schneider and the City of Florissant this award for Americanism. We are proud of the mayor for his support of the veterans of our community. The VFW would like to present this award as a thank you for his continued support.
Thank you Tony. Just want to say that one of the easiest parts of the job of being the mayor of Florissant is to have a good relationship with the veterans of our community. We're such a faith-based patriotic community. They really appreciate the sacrifices that have been made for the way of life that we live here in this country. And I don't think there's any place in the nation that appreciates the sacrifices that the men and women in uniform, of all uniforms, have made for our way of life. As a fellow veteran, somebody that's been to Vietnam a couple times, and some of my comrades did not make it back with me, I understand the sacrifices firsthand that have been made. I've seen them, I've felt them. I felt the concussion of rounds going off, the whistle of bullets going over our head. It's a scary thing. It's not a perfect world. It's a world that we're constantly evolving in. We've made a lot of progress to try to give as many people as possible an opportunity in this world. I think that democracy and a republic form of government gives us the greatest amount of opportunity. I think Lincoln was right when he said that this is man's last great hope for escape from tyranny. And I just want to say that I appreciate every man and woman that's ever served in uniform, and those that live in the City of Florissant appreciate them too. Thank you Tony.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, hearing from citizens. Again, if you wish to make a three-minute statement during this portion of the meeting, I would ask that you fill out a speaker card. The cards are located on the table next to the entrance of the chambers. If you'll hand it to Mr. Hessel, he'll forward it to our attention. Also, please be advised that this is not a question-and-answer period. If you need personal attention, see myself or one of the council people after the meeting. Beverly Nam, and I may have your name wrong ma'am, Beverly? Come on up please, from Starlet Drive. Good evening ma'am, and if you could state your name and your address for the record right up here at the podium.
My name is Beverly Nam, and I have been interested for many years. I'm taking a class now to make us better citizens, and this is what I have to say. My subject is the use of these no-gun-free zones. I would like to see the committee pass an ordinance to say that public places should not be allowed to put up a sign saying, "This is a gun-free zone," except for the employees who work here. This would not affect any private home or organization, just public places. When guns are outlawed, only outlaws will have guns. Why does anyone think that once guns have been outlawed, that only the outlaws will have the guns? Because they will get the guns one way or another. They will buy them, they will steal them, they can even make them. Guns in the hands of citizens are another way for people to protect themselves and their property, and to protect others. Guns have been called the great equalizer. Why? Because they make a 110-pound woman the equal of a 220-pound man. And they also make a man the equal of a mob. Remember those western movies where the sheriff stands up there with his shotgun and holds off an angry mob who wants to drag the prisoner out of the jail? It's a woman's right. Well, those who maintain that it is a woman's right to keep and bear arms, by the same logic, must also maintain a woman's right to keep, and a man's right to keep arms, and also to have a concealed weapon. It's relatively easy to make a gun. Anyone who qualifies for the normal high school education and mechanics can make a gun easily and quickly. We are encouraged to not judge all Muslims by the actions of a few, but we are encouraged to judge all gun owners by the action of a few who may be fanatical. People in prison and people who live in totalitarian states do not own guns. Free people do own guns. When guns are outlawed, only outlaws will have guns. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Roger Hines, Mr. Hines. Mr. Hines, if you'd state your name and the address, your address for the record please.
My name is Roger Hines. I live at 15 Trendy Lane in Florissant. I'm really here just tonight to, I wanted to introduce myself to the board. I'm running for the Ferguson Florissant School Board, and I wanted to come out and show my face and let you guys meet me and meet some of you guys, with the hopes that I can attain some support on the election of April 7. I've recently been informed that I have received the endorsement of the Teachers Association here in Ferguson Florissant. So I hope that along with that, I can get some support from the community as well as the board. Again, my name is Roger Hines, and I will be on the ballot on April 7.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hines. Good luck. Seeing no other yellow cards, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. Item number six, communications. And I've been advised there are no communications. Item number seven, public hearing. Public Hearing 1502-004.
In accordance with Section 405.310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant Missouri and the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, February 9, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Dinner Lab STL LLC DBA Dinner Lab to allow for the operation of a catering company for the property located at 472 Houdershell Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone in special need to contact City Clerk for these five days before said public hearing by calling 8397-630 or 839-5142.
Thank you ma'am. Is the petitioner present this evening? Step right on up ma'am. Good evening. If you would state your name and your address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
My name is Jessica Hefflin, and my address is 2410 Gallatin Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, 37206.
All right, very good. The floor is yours. Tell us what your plan is.
So, we are Dinner Lab. We create unique dining experiences from a group of members. Every week, we present pop-up dinners in unique locations, and we always feature a different local up-and-coming chef. We've just recently opened here in St. Louis, and the kitchen space that we're using, which is an old pizza delivery space, we need a special use permit so that we can do our catering out of that. And it's not quite catering. We take, we don't have anyone ever eating inside the kitchen. We prep three days a week for an event, and then we take that food to whatever unique location we're using for that week's dinner.
Go ahead. That's going to be in my word, so I'm very, very curious.
Good.
A whole bunch of questions. What hours of the day do you plan on being in the facility?
Well, I requested for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, only because the nature of how we operate, there will be several different people flying in and out of St. Louis occasionally to do dinners. We may be finishing a dinner at midnight and unloading at the space, and we may be leaving really early in the morning and need to clean the space up, so we'll need to be in there at 5:00 a.m. Most of our work hours will be between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00 p.m. though.
Do you have any takeout at the counter? Is there any takeout business?
Absolutely not. And actually, the only people that will be in the space will be Dinner Lab employees and our guest chef every week who we employ on a contract basis.
When, my concern is late at night, that building backs right up to a residential area, and it used to be a tavern next to where you're going to be. Can I get commitment that you won't be throwing bottles away in the trash can at 2:00 in the morning? Would you be willing to be a good neighbor?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we actually won't ever have any type of that trash on-site. We dispose of all of our trash at our events, so we'll never be throwing away bottles. We will be breaking down boxes, but that'll always happen during the daytime hours, because I know my chefs, and they're not going to break down boxes once they get done with an event late at night. So yes, I can commit that there will be no loud noises at late at night.
All right, last one. I'll let the rest of the council have their shot at you. The, lost my train of thought. We'll go with Mr. Hanky.
Yes, good evening. I'm a little intrigued by the process of what you've, give me an example of, you're saying you're going to prepare the food here, and then serve it at an, excuse me, at an offsite location?
Yes.
Give me an example of.
So, in Nashville this past Friday, what we did is we prepped for three days before an event with a guest chef, which is different every single week for Dinner Lab. And then, on that fifth day, which was Friday, we basically pack up a U-Haul with a completely mobile kitchen, all of our food, tables, chairs, silverware, everything we need to run the event. And we get to the location, and we did it at a coworking space. So it's a space that allows entrepreneurs and creative people to buy table space. Basically, we go into that space, we empty out their space, we put in a pseudo-functioning restaurant for the evening, have the event, with the events probably last around three to four hours, completely pack up, put the space back in order, pack up the U-Haul, and then come back to the space to unload any of our coolers and tables and chairs that we had at the event.
So this is basically like a restaurant for the evening?
It is.
How do you handle the health certifications for the places that you're going?
For the places that we're going?
Yes.
I don't, I actually have never run into that problem, because the spaces that we actually are using to prep our food are what we have the health permits for. So this is just like a private event at a space.
So this location is the food prep area?
This is the food prep area.
Geographically, how big of an area would you, would you, would your events be held? All over St. Louis?
All over St. Louis, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. My question's really, I guess, more for Mr. Hessel. Since this is a catering business, and I was looking through the bill itself, and also through the minutes that P&amp;Z had. P&amp;Z did ask a question, in fact, about on-seat, nobody, you're not really going to have any dine-in or carry-out at the particular location. However, I don't see anything in the bill that stipulates that. So I guess my question is, are we using that the definition catering would assume that there is no dine-in and there is no carry-out? So we're using that in the bill to convey that, rather than having a special stipulation that says no carry-out, no dine-in?
Clearly, if the intention were catering in and of itself means that you're not carry-out nor having dining going on on the premises? Now, if that's unclear to anybody, we can clarify it.
Right.
But I think by its very definition, that it's okay.
That's all I wanted to do, is just make sure that that definition, that you understand that, so that there is no dine-in and/or carry-out there at the business. It sounds like an intriguing business. I really do.
It's really fun.
Obviously, this is a model that you've done elsewhere?
We are now, as of this month, well, at the end of this month, will be in 25 different markets across America. And by the end of 2015, we're hopefully going to be doubling that and expanding internationally as well. And we're a pretty young company. We've only been around for about two and a half years now, so...
So this is basically an international company. Dinner Labs Incorporated is actually an international company.
We're hoping by the end of this year that it is.
So you just go market-to-market, find spaces, and then continue your business model?
Yes.
Well, good luck in this area.
Thank you.
Really, it sounds intriguing.
Thank you.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have one question. You were saying that this could be a 24-hour-a-day operation, like, and I know Mr. Egan asked about trash going out late at night. Now, say late at night, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, how many actual employees will be going in and out at that time?
So that may...
Does that just all depends on your order?
Yeah. Honestly, most of the time, any time that they're going to be in there during those really late-night hours, it's only going to be once a week on event days if they are packing up the kitchen or reorganizing before they head out of the market until the next time that we come back to use that space. So really, it would be one night and maybe three people at the most.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I actually attended one of these in Illinois about a year and a half ago, and it was really unique. So my question, I guess, is going to be, are you going to then advertise so that if I wanted to host one and had a venue, that we would do that as well? Or is it going to be strictly?
So it's, I'm guessing, did you come with a member as a guest?
I did.
Okay, great. So the way that our business model works right now is, we kind of keep an exclusivity component to it for our members. So all of the new members that we get are word-of-mouth, and as far as hosting them at venues, lots of venues contact us when they find out that we're in-market, because they enjoy hosting Dinner Labs. So that's how we get most of our business. We don't do any formal advertising. Any marketing that we're going to do is going to be working with food writers or bloggers or, you know, creative people like that in the community.
Yeah, it wasn't with your company that I went to, it was another, but it was a similar, a pop-up gap.
It was a pop-up. Okay, yeah.
That was what it was. And it was really kind of neat.
Yeah.
I don't know, it was 50 bucks a head or something, or whatever.
Yeah.
And we did get invited, and it was kind of a neat thing, so, but...
It's fun. It brings a lot of different people together, because we do community-style seedings, and most of our dinners are about 120 people divided into two seedings of 60. So we basically let everybody come in and sit down, and so you're always meeting new faces, and the conversation's always different. It's really good networking, you know, opportunity for our members within the community too, so it's, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Hernandez.
Hi there. I'm just curious, what brought you to Florissant, you know, the St. Louis base, and you're opening up this first opportunity here? How did you select Florissant?
Well, personally, I wasn't part of the Kitchen Planning Committee for Dinner Lab, but I think that we found the space that was absolutely perfect for what we needed to accomplish for events, and it happened to be at the old pizza place here in Florissant. And so that's how they came about choosing it here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so I remember my question. So you enlist memberships? Can anyone be a member of the club?
Anyone can be a member of a club. It's a yearly membership that you pay, and then it basically gives you access to our calendar. We release dinners weekly for about events three weeks out, and you buy tickets to whichever dinner you want to attend.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other council questions, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment at this public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Jones moves to close the public hearing, and that is seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you, guys. I also have this that I was supposed to turn in. Should I hand this over to John?
Next item on the agenda is old business. Bills for second reading. Bill number 9056. Mr. Schmidt moves to postpone that bill. That is seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The bill will be postponed until February 23, 2015. Bill 9066. I will motion for a second reading, and that is seconded by Mr. Shuldrough. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B5 Ordinance Number 7738 to allow for the addition of a barbecue cooking area for a sit-down carry-out restaurant for the property located 8471 North Lindbergh.
I will make a motion for a third reading, and that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to B5 Ordinance Number 7738 to allow for the addition of a barbecue cooking area for a sit-down carry-out restaurant for the property located 8471 North Lindbergh.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Bill 9066 passes and becomes ordinance 8114-8114. Bill 9067. Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a second reading, and that is seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the second time.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to AJB's Barbecue LLC DBA AJB's Barbecue to allow for the operation of a carry-out delivery restaurant for the property located 18 Patterson Pilatus Shopping Center.
Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a third reading, and that is seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to AJB's Barbecue LLC DBA AJB's Barbecue to allow for the operation of a carry-out delivery restaurant for the property located 18 Patterson Plaza Shopping Center.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Bill 9067 passes and becomes ordinance 8115-8115. Mr. Hanky makes a motion for a third reading, and that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Enterprise Leasing Company of St. Louis LLC DBA Enterprise Rent-A-Car to allow for the operation of a vehicle rental facility for the property located 1101 North Highway 67.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
New business. Board appointments. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reappoint the following to the senior commission, Janice Damming, the chairman, Don LaFier, Helen Maloney, and Margaret Mersicki.
Mr. Shuldrough makes that motion, and that is...
Seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Appointments carried. Go ahead.
I'd also like to reappoint the following individual to the Veterans Commission, Mr. Drew Garvey.
I will make that motion, that's seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Bills for first reading. Bill 9072.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Dinner Lab STL LLC DBA Dinner Lab to allow for the operation of a catering company for the property located at 472 Houdershell Road.
Bill 9073.
Ordinance authorizing the reimbursement of capital expenditures with proceeds of tax-exempt bonds.
Bill 9074.
Ordinance advancing the sum of $1,170,000 from the General Fund of the City of Florissant to the court-building fund to provide for the purchase of the court-building and related costs.
Bill 9075.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Florissant to enter into a purchase-and-sale agreement for the purchase of the property here and after described and known as 4575 Washington Street for use as a new court facility.
Bill 9076.
Ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 210 offenses by adding a new Section 210 506 regarding the regulation and sale of the possession of vapor products.
Next item on the agenda, council announcements. Mr. Lee.
I would just like to take a moment to offer my congratulations to Ward One residents Terry and Suzanne Getty. They're going to be celebrating 45 years of marriage here in Residence in Ward One, so congratulations.
I would like to take the opportunity and advertise some T-shirts that the police department now have for sale. One of the officers, Officer Mann, has come down with cancer, and the police department is banding together, and they're going to sell T-shirts and hoodies to help raise money for her. That's from the Police Welfare Association. A navy blue T-shirt's 10 bucks, and it goes all the way up to an adult 2X large hoodie for 25 bucks. If you're interested in purchasing one of these hoodies, see me at the meeting, or you can call the Florissant Police Department at 831-7000, and they'll put you in touch with the people selling the T-shirts. Again, that's for Officer Lori Mann. Lori's been a police officer and employee with us for many, many, many years. Mr. Jones.
Yes, I'd like to thank the council as a whole for considering my stop signs on Encinita and Cortez. I've got a lot of feedback from everybody on there, and they seem very happy. I've got a lot of feedback from everybody on there, and they seem very happy, so I guess we'll look at things in a couple months and see how they sit. But I'd like to thank all of yous.
Message from the mayor. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to just note the passing of a great athlete who had an affiliation with the City of Florissant for a number of years, until the City of Florissant decided to manage the Florissant Golf Club. For several years, we had the Casper Management Company managing our golf facility. And it just came to my attention that, over the weekend, Mr. Billy Casper passed away. He was a very kind and gentle person. He was not someone that looked for attention for himself, a very modest person. However, only a half a dozen individuals won more PGA Tour events than Mr. Casper did. So he was a very, very successful golf professional, and also, he started a very successful golf management company. So we mourn the passing of Mr. Billy Casper. I was privileged to host the high school poetry out loud contest that was conducted in part at our Civic Center Theater, and we had some very eloquent young speakers, high school-age speakers, that were presenting a poem that meant quite a bit to them, and their delivery was quite impressive. I was fortunate to be able to welcome them to our beautiful city. Party on the Ice, we're going to have Friday, March 6, the annual youth event to close our ice rink. It's the spring event for the youth of the community to promote the DARE program, drug avoidance and resistance education. Our police department is in the classrooms, teaching the DARE philosophies, and to enhance that experience, to try to get the youth of the community to embrace DARE. We have four events every year. We've had the Project Liftoff party in Christmas time for 26 years now. We've had Splish Blast for about half that amount of time, maybe a little longer. And then, a couple years ago, we instituted a Halloween party, and the Party on the Ice in the springtime. It's very well-attended. We have a lot of youth attending those events. Very enthusiastic. Also, the free ice skating was very well-attended on the days that we had at New Year's Eve, and also on the Martin Luther King Day. Anticipate Presidents' Day will be the same way. The Greater North County Chamber of Commerce is going to have their Business Fair at the Egan Center on March 21. This is sort of a taste of North County, and this was very, very well-attended the last two years. The Business Fair had sort of dwindled just a little bit in popularity, but the addition of the food has rekindled the enthusiasm for it. It was very well-attended for the last two years. I anticipate a great attendance this year, and this is a great event by the Chamber of Commerce. And then lastly, I'd like to just say that Florissant residents really, really like to eat. And as you can see tonight, we got Red's Barbecue get-passed. That's going to be at the location, what used to be the Dunkin' Donuts in Ward 3. And then, we also had AJB's Barbecue get-passed. That's going to be in Patterson Plaza in Nagels. And also, this Thursday, we're going to have the ribbon-cutting for Fat Boys Barbecue on Graham Road near Washington. And we also had, last month, we had the grand opening of Sweetie Pie's. And then, on February 2, a week ago, we had Culvers open. If anybody hasn't been to Culvers yet, nobody wants to admit that they haven't been to Culvers yet. We had a great grand opening on Monday, February 2, and they came very close to setting the record. We're hoping that they set the record for the first week. They think that they might surpass that. We'll find out soon if we beat the record for the opening of a new Culvers. So we're very excited to have a lot of places, a lot of different food choices to those that we already have, and maybe this, next month, we'll have another restaurant to announce. Thanks.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be February 23, 2015. Mr. Hernandez moves to adjourn. That is seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor? Aye. The council stands adjourned.